We'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission for March 28 to order, please. Would you roll call and determination of a quorum, please?
Chair President Sattler.
Present.
Vice Chair Borders.
Present.
Commissioner Eswein.
Here.
Commissioner Monroy.
Commissioner Solarno.
Here.
Commissioner Stoll.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
All quorums present.
Commissioner Borders, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I have a statement submitted by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that are not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none. For possible action, approval of the minutes from February 28, 2017. Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes as presented.
Commissioner Borders has made a motion, a second. Commissioner Solarno, seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any modification of the agenda? Lee?
No modification of the agenda. I will just note, the agenda's a little bit different. Have the consent section on there. Will you be taking action on all of those? And we'll explain that as the time comes up for that. I know you go over that. But I wanted to point out that we've put a lot of renewals of billboards on there. They're all billboards that are on the consent agenda. We did that just to move the meeting along mostly, but we've done that historically in the past for these renewals as well. We haven't had any changes in the ordinances regarding billboards in the past five years, so that's the purpose of them being on the consent agenda.
Look for a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Tingles has made a motion. Do we have a second?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would advise, just for consistency throughout the agenda, if you want to accept public comment before you move to take an action on this, that's all right.
Okay. At this point, is there any public comment on the consent agenda regarding the billboard renewals? Seeing none? Now we have a motion from Commissioner Tingle and a second from Commissioner Solarno. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Borders.
While there have been no changes in the ordinances in the last five years, some of these billboards are 40 years old. I think it would be handy in the future if we knew their ages and whether or not they did comply, so that we can keep, you know, so that the commission has a chance to keep track of where they are and what they're doing.
Okay. So noted, and I think they were all brought up to the current standard at some point in the past, but we can give you the history of that. Nixon.
Any other comments? Call for a vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? E1 SUP-18-018, for possible action, to consider requests for a special use permit for a billboard on properties. No, we've done that.
We've done that.
I'm sorry.
Turn the page.
I do need to turn the page. You need to turn the page. I'm sorry.
Page three.
Yep, gotcha. Okay, catching up here. G1 SUP-18-031, for possible action, to consider requests for a special use permit to allow a fence to exceed the height limitation on property zone, single-family, one acre, SF-1A, located at 4031 Center Drive, APN 009-142-11. Oh? That's all goes down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject's property is a corner lot with frontage on both Valley View Drive and Center Drive. Here's a photograph of the site where you can see Valley View Drive in the foreground. Valley View Drive is a dirt road, and it's kind of hard to distinguish where the road ends and the property begins on this photograph, given the recent construction. So the applicant has recently constructed a new home with a detached garage in the rear. The applicant is seeking to place a six-foot solid fence along the side property line adjacent to Valley View Drive. The applicant is seeking to place this fence directly on the property line. I will point out, had the fence been bumped back five feet, it wouldn't be before you today. It could still be a solid fence, six feet tall. It would just need to be five feet back from the property line. The applicant in their application explained why they felt it was important to have it on the property line, for privacy, for security purposes, and for dust control. The Planning Commission does have the authority to issue a special use permit for a fence to exceed the height limitation, which is what the applicant is requesting. Staff initially, if you looked at your packet, you saw initially had concerns about site distance with respect to a six-foot vehicular gate right at the property line. Once the staff realized that this right-of-way is actually 10 feet wider than necessary and looked at the geometry, if you will, of that type of road standard, they realized that given the travel lane of the roadway, there would be adequate site distance even with a six-foot fence at the property line. However, to make sure that the vehicles stayed within the travel lane, we are recommending condition of approval for landscaping on the exterior of the fence in the vicinity of the gates to just better delineate where the cars should be driving, because as you can see from that first photograph, it's not real clear. So having said that, we have reviewed in the staff report the seven required findings of fact, and the staff was able to make those findings in the affirmative with the conditions of approval, and we are recommending approval. The leeches are present, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Borders?
What is the right-of-way on Valley View Drive?
It's a 60-foot wide right-of-way in reality, because it's a local road that requires right-of-way width, it's 50 feet.
Okay. So if we decided in sometime in the future to pave that road, it would only take the 50 feet of right-of-way, so in essence, the other 10 feet, this fence would be on the five feet from the right-of-way?
Right. Technically, and that was the discussion we had with the property owner, they could seek to vacate that, or abandon that five foot of extra right-of-way along their property. The other five feet would be the property across the street, and we de facto end up where the code would allow them to be anyway.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Krista, K-R-I-S-T-A, Leach, L-E-A-C-H.
Lawrence Leach.
First of all, you've seen the conditions of approval. Do you accept all those conditions as written?
Absolutely. We plan to work with engineering when, if and when we are approved, and we are ready to build the fence to make sure that we meet the requirements.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Solarno.
I would hope that you realize that wood fences, six feet high, in Carson City, with the winds we have are very terrific, and they blow down by the dozen. So I would hope that you keep that in mind, if this passes, so that you don't have to redo it over and over in the future.
So we plan to have the exterior to look like the picture that you see here, and then the bones, if you will, will be on the inside of the property, and we plan on putting steel posts as well.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring it back for discussion or a motion? Oh, first of all, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item from the public? Anyone have to comment on it? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion or a possible motion.
I'll make the motion, and I just, I'll read the corrections. There were some references to the wrong SUP on the actual staff report. I move to approve SUP 18-031, a special use permit request to allow an increase in the permitted fence height in the street-side yard from three feet to six feet on property zoned, single-family, one acre, located at 4031, not 4032, Center Drive, APN 009-142-11, based on findings in the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stoll. We have a second. We have a second from Commissioner Tingle. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. G2 SUP-17-217, for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit to construct a detached garage that results in a accessory structure that exceeds the 5% of the lot area and exceeds the 50%, but not more than 75% of the size of the primary structure on property zone, Conservation Reserve, located at 5371 Corian Court, APN 008-816-21.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting to construct a 2,600-square-foot detached garage in the southeast corner of his property. This will result in accessory buildings are 70% of the size of the primary building, covering 5.9% of the lot area. The 70% could be addressed through an administrative permit, but given the applicant had to come forward for the special use permit for the lot coverage, we've combined the two requests, and we're giving the request to the Planning Commission. The staff has, I'll just go through, we have a neighborhood contacts slide. What you'll see in this slide is that, and I was surprised when I went out there the first time, there aren't lots of big buildings. And so I actually called the applicant, and I said, "Are you sure you don't have CC&Rs that prevent this type of building?" Because there's really one at the entrance, and then there are none. You'll also see this is near a non-residential area, so when you go to the southern portion, you start getting into a more industrial area. The applicant did hold, double-checked his CC&Rs, and there was not a prohibition on this type of building. He also held a neighborhood meeting, so this item was actually on your agenda for last month, and it was continued to today because he redesigned it based on neighborhood input to relocate the location of the garage. The doors for the garage will be located on the north and west sides of the building, thus facing the interior of the lot, and to the south and east sides will have blank walls, so it would minimize the impacts to neighbors. So here is a front elevation of the property, and you'll see the fencing around the property. You can also see the driveway just to my left side of the picture, which would take vehicles to the rear where this garage will be. So the staff has reviewed the seven required findings of fact, and we were able to make the findings in the affirmative with conditions of approval, and we are recommending approval. Robert Hopkins, the property owner, is present, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Hope, that lot, if I remember from going out there, is fenced completely around it from the house back around the property, I believe?
That's my recollection, having gone to the street behind it as well.
Any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward, please? State your name for the commission.
I'm Robert Hopkins.
First of all, Mr. Hopkins, you've seen the conditions of approval, or do you accept all those as written, recommended by staff?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
After your community meeting and this revision, is your community in support of your building, or are there still problems?
I wouldn't exactly call it a community meeting. We met with some of the neighbors who had expressed concern. I volunteered to meet with people. We did have discussions, and I think that we've done a reasonable job to mitigate the concerns to the extent that was possible. We do have, I would say that the immediately adjacent neighbors no longer have, you know, would like to block this from happening, as far as I know, so.
I commend you for meeting with those folks, and from the original, if I remember right, you've moved it as well as dropped it down a foot or two as well.
Yes, that's correct. We dropped it down.
Which were their concerns originally?
About three feet, and it's also now on the lower portion of the lot, and moving it to that side also moves it farther away on the people's sightlines, kind of toward the mountain, so.
Questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir. At this time, we'll take any comments. Anybody have comments on this application? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion or a motion. Commissioner Solarno?
I would like to make a motion for approval.
And, thank you. I move to approve SUP-17-217, a request for a special use permit to allow a 2,600-square-foot detached accessory structure, and allow the accessory structures on-site to exceed 5% of the parcel size on property zone, Conservation Reserve, located at 5371 Corine Court, APN 008-816-21, based on findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. We have a motion from Commissioner Solarno. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Eswein. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? G3 SUP-15-079-02, for possible action, to consider a request for a revision to a special use permit for an accessory structure that exceeds 75% of the size of the primary building, specifically revised in conditions of approval related to a requirement for landscaping to screen the structure from the street and adjacent properties, a size limitation of 1,200 feet for the accessory structure, a requirement for removal of two shed structures, and requirement for unregistered and inoperative vehicles not to be stored outside this structure. The property is zoned, single-family, one acre, SF-1A, and located at 4589 Silver Sage Drive, APN 009-176-05. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With this request, the cumulative total of the accessory structures on the site would be 118% of the size of the primary structure. Therefore, a special use permit would be required as the cumulative total of the accessory structures would exceed 75% of the size of the primary structure. This request is similar to a request you had a few months ago in the same neighborhood. I have put on the board a neighborhood context slide, which shows you that in this neighborhood, it's not, unlike your last application, it's not uncommon to find accessory buildings in larger shop buildings. It's very commonplace, and this graphic shows that. In the case that you saw a few months ago, the commission did allow the vehicles to be stored outside the building, as the property was going to be fenced with a six-foot-tall fence. So I think the discussion of the commission was, well, if it's fenced, we're not going to see the vehicles anyway, so they don't have to be in the building, they'll be inside a fenced-in area. This property has sections of fence, but it's not completely fenced with opaque fencing, so the cars in the backyard are still visible. I also have received a question about whether or not there's a code violation with respect to the cars stored on the site, so I just want to address that. The same question came up three years ago, when you looked at the initial special use permit in 2015. At that time, the code enforcement officer visited the site and concluded there was not a violation. In order to determine if we do have a violation or not now, I would just have to refer to our code enforcement folks who enforce Title VIII, which is the section that talks about inoperable vehicles and how many of these vehicles you can have on-site. The proposed building will be located, in general, in the middle of the property, and the property is a 1.3-acre property. Again, the staff, here's a graphic of the elevation. The staff has reviewed in the staff report the seven required findings for the issuance of the special use permit, and we have been able to make those findings in the affirmative. I will note that if the landscape screening is eliminated, it may be appropriate to have more fencing. I have spoken with the McIntoshes, and is there intention to put up new fencing? That's not in your application. So I have asked the McIntoshes to speak specifically to that and put that on the record, because that's not evident in the application before you. So if you are able, staff was able to make the findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval. Jason McIntosh, who is the, who lives at the property, is present, and I am happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff?
If, in fact, there is a code violation, how does that affect what we're talking about?
It doesn't, because the code violation would be related to the number of vehicles on-site and whether or not they're being restored or they're inoperable, and so code enforcement would have that discussion with the resident on the property to determine to what extent are those vehicles inoperable, to what extent are those vehicles not registered, and to what extent are those vehicles being restored, and determine compliance with Title VIII.
From looking at, I was out there yesterday, and from looking at the area, there's a large number, quite a large number of vehicles, and they're all mostly intact, et cetera. I'm not sure if the size of this building would accommodate all those vehicles or not, but I guess we can discuss that with the applicant. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? Yes, would you state your name for the commission?
Jason McIntosh.
Sir, okay. You've seen the conditions and recommended conditions of approval. Do you accept those as written?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
Landscape. There was a question about landscape, and it's absent in certain portions of the lot right now.
I think it was more the fencing. They have a requirement for landscaping to serve as a screening device. There is some fencing that accomplishes that, but given the gaps in the fencing, it's not entirely screened. The applicant has indicated to me, but it's not part of the application, that there will be additional fencing proposed, and so it would be appropriate for the applicant to put that on the record.
Okay.
From looking at the property, because as you come down the road or pass in front of your house, you have a kind of a rail fence with fencing to keep your critter, your dogs or whatever, I'm sure, out or in or whatever. So if you, kind of where the driveway comes in, if you ran a fence at the end of the sideline, kind of across behind the house, that would basically, pretty much enclose it, I would think, correct?
The fence line that I'm going to finish is going to basically be the six-foot-tall fence all the way down the whole south side of the property until the front corner of the house, per code, and then it'll drop down to the three-foot fence across the rest of the front of the property, and I've still got to build a gate, and then a code enforcement officer, when he came out a few years ago and we were talking about the fence, he wanted me to build 20 feet north to south at the driveway to block, because you're driving by, you can't see down the corner of the.
And from looking at it, I think if you built the north to south along the back of the driveway at the end of the sideline, I don't know that you would need the solid fence down next to the house.
That's just something I want to do.
Oh, okay, okay. And also, you do not have a garage presently.
Correct.
There's no attached or detached garage.
I have a concrete slab to work in.
Okay. And I know one of the limitations they put on was registered vehicles, you know, unregistered vehicles would have to be inside. Again, looking at them, it looks like some rather old trucks and cars and stuff, obviously, but they're all intact.
Correct.
And myself personally, I don't have as much problem with those vehicles out, rather than, you know, if they're up on blocks or hoods missing or whatever.
That never happens on that property.
So I don't know if we could address the fact, rather than being unregistered, to maybe it's okay to have intact vehicles, because I don't know that you'd have room in a 1,500-square-foot to put all those in.
From what I understand, according to code, 1983 and earlier is considered a vintage or a classic vehicle, and those fall under a different category. There are, at the present time, three, four vehicles that don't fall into that category. So those four are pretty much the first projects that need to go. I need a roof, so those will be inside pretty much immediately so they can get out.
And the two sheds are eight by 12?
Yes.
So if those did come down, once this project was done, that would be less, you know, using up the amount of whatever.
I use those storage units as they are right now, one for my landscaping equipment that I use for the property, and the other one is an overflow of stuff from the house.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions for the applicant?
Commissioner? I would want to, without obviously being all that knowledgeable about Section VIII, but it's clear from Section VIII in the code that there needs to be the fencing all the way around where the vehicles, junk vehicles, as they're determined, as they're described in the code. So I would want to add a condition that there's fencing all the way around where the vehicles are going to be stored, whether they're outside or in the building, but the fencing needs to be all the way around that area on the lot, so they can't be seen by.
That was going to be finished at the end of the summer, or by the end of the summer, the rear fencing across the back and in the front, little pieces.
For the applicant? Commissioner Borders?
No, not.
Staff?
Hope is, as far as a condition for the fence, can you put a time on it? He said probably till the end of the summer. Can we put a condition in there that says that the property will be fenced within the next 90 days, I mean, next nine months or next year?
Right. Sure. What we can do as part of the building permit, what we do is when they apply for their building permit, we look for compliance with the conditions of the special use permit, so they can include the fence on their building permit, not that they need a building permit for it, because they don't, but that way we'll see compliance, and then what we'll do is expect to see the fence complete prior to a certificate of occupancy on the building. And I think probably, given we're practically in April, timing-wise, we're probably good, because they have extended their building permit. They haven't even started construction.
Would something like that work for you guys?
Absolutely.
Okay. And therefore adding the fencing would alleviate the need for the landscaping. We could have that in there as well, correct?
If that's the position of the commission, that's the position of the staff, that the fencing basically would serve the screening function that you are seeking from the landscaping, and that would be an adequate substitution, but that's what's before the commission.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have questions.
Hang on just a moment, please. You're still with the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, public comment at this time. Anyone who would like to comment, please come forward, state your name, and make your comment.
My name is Debbie Hanner, and my mom, Dolores Hanner, lives a house away, two houses away, I think, from this property, and I own the property next to her. And this, there are buildings out there in that area, like she mentioned, but this would be, being such an open area, you can see through the fence. this would be, being such an open area, you can see through the fence. There's 19 cars there. There's no way 19 cars are going to fit in that shed. So the way we see it is there's still going to be, you're still going to be seeing all those cars, because even through the fence you can see it, and the shed on top of it. So it's, it's an eyesore for the neighborhood. And it's been, the last, the last committee, a couple of years ago, I guess it was, it was disputed by, by all the neighbors.
State your name for the commission?
How you doing? Hey, it's not objected by all the neighbors.
Mr. McIntosh, would you state your name?
Oh, John McIntosh. I'm Jason's father. It's not objected by most of the neighbors or whatever. We've got signed stuff that says it's okay, and it's not an eyesore. It's one of the better-looking pieces of property out there, okay? And it always will be.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay.
Well, and Mr. McIntosh, I believe what you're referencing and it mentioned in your application that you had contacted 24 of the 30, and 25 of them were not objecting to the.
No.
26 of them were not objecting to it, okay.
And most of those are the ones that were on the original petition. You know, this Hanner I've known there from years, since I moved here, you know? But I'm sure she wouldn't have, if she knew who she was talking to, she wouldn't have objected. Mrs. White Wolf's kind of been a pain, okay?
Thank you, sir.
But, thank you.
Okay.
I'd vent myself, or I'll just explode inside. Have a good one.
Take care. Any other comments? Okay, let's act for further discussion or a possible motion. Commissioners?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, just a question, Hope. Should I add the condition to, should make it Condition 12 under the building permit or up front as Condition Number 6?
It will be okay wherever, wherever you're comfortable doing it. I think probably going with 12 is going to be easier to keep our sequence intact, and you can identify, you know, your timing will be, you know, prior to final inspection on the building.
Okay.
Just to clarify for myself and everybody, so with the proper fencing, which would be arranged through staff, then the landscaping goes away?
Actually, I, I think what I heard Commissioner Stoll say, and what I'm anticipating she's going to repeat, is that the fencing will be, will surround the area where the vehicles are stored, and it will be six-foot-tall opaque fencing. And I think that specificity is helpful.
All right, and also then the landscaping goes away and the sheds stay?
They have a request for four modifications to their existing special use permit, so if this is approved, all four of those modifications are approved, and it sounds like there will be an additional condition placed on it.
Thank you.
I move to approve SUP 15-079-2, a special use permit request to allow the cumulative square footage of accessory structures on the property to exceed 75% of the size of the main residence on property zone, single-family, one acre, located at 4589 Silver Sage Drive, APN 009-176-05, based on findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report, with an additional Condition Number 12 to require six-foot fencing around the property where the cars are located, six-foot opaque fencing to be in place before the certificate of occupancy is issued for the accessory structure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
A second.
By saying aye? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. G-4, TSM-17-184, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding a tentative subdivision map application by Blackstone Development Group, Inc., to create 209 lot subdivision of approximately 58.5 acres within Lampa Ranch North specific plan area on property approved for single-family 6,000 SF6 zoning, located at 2,200 East Fifth Street, APN 010-041-71. Staff?
Mr. Chair, at the request of the applicant, the staff is recommending continuation to the meeting of April 25, 2018.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we continue item TM 17-184 to the Planning Commission meeting of April 25, 2018.
We have a second. Motion, we have a second, Commissioner. Solano, seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. G-5, ZCA-18-032, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, oops, I'm sorry. Again, ZCA-18-032, for possible action to recommend to the Board of Supervisors regarding an ordinance relating to marijuana, amending Title XV, zoning Apex A development standards, Division 1.20, medical marijuana establishments and marijuana establishments of the City of Carson, Carson City Municipal Code to amend and clarify regulations governing signage for medical marijuana establishments and marijuana establishments. Commissioner, or Lee?
Good evening. For the record, Lee Plomo, Community Development Director. You will recall, within the last few months, towards the end of 2017, we, the city adopted a new ordinance related to marijuana establishments. In particular, it allowed the retail facilities in addition to the medical marijuana facilities. As part of that, it, part of, part of the standards became that to have a retail store, you had to be co-located with a medical marijuana dispensary, among, among other regulations. So as, as you, as you'll see in the staff report, so basically, in summary, the purpose of this item is to, first of all, we, we need to do something to correct an error we made in the drafting of the ordinance by which, which specifically is inadvertently deleting the reference directly to a specific section of the sign code elsewhere in the code that limited the sign area of marijuana establishments to the 15 square feet for the dispensaries and retail stores. Offices are, are limited to 15 square feet, so there was a specific reference to that to limit the sign area. That reference being gone, then they would, would be allowed to have a sign area like any other retail store. I have some examples in here. It's based on the frontage. It's quite a bit more than, than what the marijuana establishments are allowed now. Yeah, let me just go through a couple examples. I just have photos, a couple photos of the two existing dispensaries. So, so now we have the dispensaries at both locations or have the, the retail business as well as the medical marijuana business. This is Sierra Wellness. So Sierra Wellness is a building. They have a frontage facing the parking lot in their little shopping center, and a frontage facing the street. Per the sign code, as it was intended, they were allowed 15 square feet per frontage like, like an office building. And then this is, the other location is Rise. They're on the far right-hand building of this. That's their, that's a 15-square-feet sign under the current, or as it was intended and was drafted, was the, that's 15 square feet. I imagine the other, the other retail businesses in there, you can see that they're, they're bigger signs. They probably haven't maximized their permitted sign area, but they're bigger. So what we are proposing to do is, instead of referring to some sign code elsewhere, is to just pull the standards, like with the other marijuana establishment standards, is to pull them all into the development standards. The ordinance is attached, it's on page two, starts on page two of the staff report, but basically it's to pull those standards and not make any changes except, the proposal, and I've talked to the, the representative of the businesses a bit, the proposal is where instead of 15 square foot per frontage and those other things, is to make it 30 square feet total, period. Couple, you know, the rationale's in there, a couple things. It, first of all, it's still a lot, it's a lot less than is permitted for other area, for other businesses, other retail businesses. And really, there's technically two businesses operating in, in there, so it would allow 15 square feet per business. It would put them on equal footing, making it 30 feet, square feet, period. Anyway, so that, so that's the proposal, that's up, that's for discussion and a recommendation, that's, that's our recommendation. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer questions you might have.
I, I have read this over, and I remember from when we originally did this, that, as is mentioned under H, under discussion, that medical marijuana establishments and marijuana must be discreet, professional, and consistent with traditional-style signage for pharmacies and medical offices, and I'm quite comfortable with that. And one thing I would like to maybe discuss a little bit or possibly bring up a little is the allowance of banners, et cetera. I mean, if you can put up a 300-square-foot banner on the front of a building, state, I just, how it would affect or if there's any control of that? Thank you.
So, yeah, that, that has come up. So explaining, there are other sections in the sign code that allow businesses to have temporary banners, so it's, and it's 30 days within any 90-day period, they can be up. I pulled, I pulled these from Google Street View, which didn't happen to have the current banner that's up on the Sierra Wellness. So banners are permitted, temporary banners for limited time periods. The, the current businesses have, have been given the regulations, so they are aware of those time limits, and so they'll have to come down under the current regulations. They're also limited in size. Again, it's somewhat based on the size of the building and size of the frontage. I don't, and it goes up as your frontage is bigger, but there are limits in size for those. But they are otherwise exempt signs, so there was nothing in the current ordinance as adopted that would prohibit this business from utilizing that provision as it stands now.
So as it's written now, they could have one banner up for 30 days, come it down and put a different banner up, or no?
No, so you have a banner up for 30 days, and you have to take it down for 60 days, so that's a 90-day period, and then you could put it up again for 30 days.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner?
I have a question. Go ahead.
Just, just about the, the freestanding sign section. Since they're both in shopping centers, and maybe in the future there'll be new medical marijuana establishments not in shopping centers standalone, but you have here freestanding signs would be allowed in addition to the, the wall signage, but if they're in a shopping center, wouldn't, wouldn't it be a complex sign listing all the different shops, not a standalone, separate freestanding sign?
So they're not allowed to, I'm looking at it kind of quickly as you say that to make sure it says it correctly, but they're not allowed to have a different freestanding sign. They are allowed to have a maximum of 32 square feet on, on the permitted freestanding sign. The freestanding sign requirements otherwise applied, it's one per shopping center or one per parcel, but the marijuana business is limited in sign, in freestanding sign area. So other businesses could have bigger signs, and I think that's pretty much the case in, at least in one of them, that's the case now, but it's, it's 32 square feet of freestanding sign area.
But number, number three, and maybe again, I'm not reading it right, number, actually there are two number threes. Talk about the maximum freestanding sign height, and then the, the second number three talks about she'll be 10 feet for a freestanding sign, as separate from the wall signage that's allowed in the beginning of, so conceivably you, you would allow them to do both?
So both, so just first, just talking about the dispensaries and retail stores, they both do currently have their wall signage, plus, I don't think either one of them shows the freestanding sign, plus, plus they have a, a sign in the freestanding, in the shopping center's freestanding sign.
For all the shops.
Right, it shows them and whoever else is there, right? They're listed on that as well.
Right, and, and their area within that sign is limited to 32 square feet.
Okay.
So the other, and then those other two sections you referenced, so the first, the first section, again, staying on just the retail stores and, well, no, it's the, yeah, the first one you mentioned, staying on just the retail stores and dispensaries, that's where, depending on if it's a, the, the sign code does have a different height requirement, whether it's a shopping center or a standalone parcel, so that's where, and it's, it's 20 or 30 feet. It's 20 feet for a commercial standalone parcel, it's 30 feet for a shopping center. So that's, it's just referencing the maximum height, depending on the context of where the store is located. The next one is for all other, for all other types of facilities that are the dispense, production, product manufacturing, cultivation facilities, which are already limit, they're already in the, limited to the industrial area, those freestanding, any of those freestanding signs would be limited to 10 feet in height.
Commissioner Boarder?
Yes. Lee, the, the 30 square feet is, the assumption is that there's two stores of 15 feet apiece?
That's a, that's a rationale for 30 square feet.
But if, in reality, it could be one store with 30 foot of sign.
Or one store, one business combined, doing both with 30 square feet in both, either case.
So you get, in essence, we've given him twice as much signage.
Then.
If the guy, if, if the owner of the store owns both parts of the store, and before we told him he could only have 15 feet in the building, now we told him he can, because he has two stores, he can have 30 feet, and he can still use the 30 feet for store A and let everybody assume that store B is there.
I think it could be applied that way. Yeah, I've been, it's, it's whether, whether it's one business, or they could choose to use all 30 square feet for one name or split it up into two signs. Yes, that's how it's written.
And that would be because they have cultivation in it, just.
No, because it's a dispensary, dispensary, medical and.
Dangle.
Are there any codes as far as sandwich board signs? So the, the freestanding little sandwich board you'd stick out on the curb and everybody drives by, and is there any restriction on those?
Yes, I would, I would say that currently in the code, sandwich board signs are prohibited along the commercial corridors, including these properties. They're permitted downtown right now. They're intended to be pedestrian in context. Again, I'm not saying there aren't violations around that haven't been caught, but the regulation is they can't have an A-frame sign.
Would that also apply to someone out spinning a board or whatever that's advertising it as well?
Now, you're giving, you're giving them ideas now.
Yeah, like Liberty Tax, like the tax service.
Yeah, no, there, there, those are other, other exempt signs. There's other, there's other exempt signs if a person is holding a sign and on their property, there are exemptions for that as well.
Kind of lose a little of the discreet and whatever with that kind of thing. Is, does the applicant like to come, is there, does the applicant like to come forward, please? There is no applicant, correct?
If you have any questions, Will Adler's in the audience, he represents the two stores. If you have any questions for him, he's available.
So we'll do a public comment, but. Are we at public comment officially?
Public, okay, that's fine.
All right. I'm Will Adler, and I'm with the Sierra Cannabis Coalition. I represent both the dispensaries in question. Sign spinning did come up, not in Carson City, but down in Las Vegas. They did have a sign spinning team for a certain dispensary down there, and it is not thought of as professional or in a pharmaceutical manner, having a sign spinner, so they did get a violation for that, we're told. That is not part of the state's purview in their vision of what our signage should be either, so the state kind of took care of that as well as, I'm sure Carson City would object if we did that.
And that's kind of where I was coming from with the banner, because, I mean, all of a sudden, when it became recreational, you know, there's a big banner saying recreational available. available. And that, to me, is not as discreet as it is normally, we just see our wellness or whatever, and that's why I was asking about that particular item.
Yes, and, I mean, this is a decent photo, actually, but as Lee stated, the new ordinance does restrict it to 30 total square feet. So both those signs on the corner, Sierra Wellness on each side, are 15 square feet, but they don't get two new 30-foot signs, it's in a total of 30 square feet. And it no longer matters frontage or what have you in addition. But another good example in this photo is, currently, we're not under a restriction of signage, so we would be sort of zoned like other retail establishments in a multiple-use parking lot like that. And Sunrise Motors, you could see it in this photo, is about 150 square feet of signage, and it's large and yellow. So we are still far more strict than the most retail businesses in Carson City. But having said that, we do support this clarification of the signage rules, and we do support how it's written and structured, and we think it's a positive change to have more clarity on what we can and cannot do than anything else, and we're here to be 100% supportive of what's written before you. Any other questions? Up here? Thank you.
Bring it back for discussion, or, and there's no other public comment? Discussion or motion?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of an ordinance amending Title 18, Appendix Development Standards Division 1.20, related to signage for marijuana establishments as published on the agenda.
I'll second.
Opposed by Commissioner Tingle, and a second by Commissioner Borders. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Salerno's opposed. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward, G6 MISC-18-038 for possible action, consideration of an appeal of the staff's interpretation and application of Section 1.13 of the Development Standards Concerning Fences and 18.05.055 of the Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Structures. Should I read this now? This is, as we approach this, we're going to handle it in this way. The sequence of the hearing will be as follows. The staff will present, and there'll be any questions for staff. The applicant will make their presentation, and we can have questions for the applicants, or appealing, questions by the commission, clarification by the appealing, clarification by staff, public testimony, commission discussion and decision. So we just ask that, while the staff and the appealing are making their presentations, we hold our questions and act till they're complete.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan. This is an appeal of the staff's decision, or interpretation and decision. Per Carson City Municipal Code 1802060, an administrative decision may be appealed to the Planning Commission. What I will do is I will review my observations, the code provisions that I find to be applicable, and how I'm applying those code provisions to this, to this property. The property owner and appellant, Peter Gibbons, I believe is present. Yes? Yes. The subject property is located at 3809 Ponderosa Drive. The property is a single-family one-acre, or SF1A. The SF1A zoning district requires a 30-foot front setback. The applicant has constructed a partial wall, partial fence, within this front setback area. This structure consists of a three-foot masonry wall with a three-foot raw iron fence mounted on top of it. Per the Development Standards, which I've included in Tab 15, 1.13.5A, and I quote, "No fences, walls, hedges, or hedges exceeding four feet in height shall be permitted within the front yard setback." So this structure is within the front yard, it has a total height of six feet, although it may be less than that when measured from crown of road, however, the cumulative height does exceed four feet. Therefore, I find it to be in violation of Section 1.13.5A. Options to remedy this are to reduce the height of the fence, or to obtain a special use permit from this commission to have a fence exceeds the height limitation. In terms of storage containers, I have a photograph of a storage container that was located on the site. Section 18.05.030.1A states, no, of the Carson City Municipal Code, states, "No automobile, recreational vehicle, tent, train, boxcar, semi-trail, semi-truck trailer, passenger coach, bus, streetcar body, or similar enclosure may be used or erected for storage, or occupied for living or sleeping purposes in any use district." So that means in any zoning district, and then it says unless there's an exception, but I don't find an exception that would apply here. My position is based on Section 18.05.030.1A, that the storage, this container is a similar enclosure, thus not allowed. The applicant has built shelters around these storage containers consisting of walls and roof structures. These, I take the position these are accessory buildings, and accessory buildings are defined in the code, and I've included that under Tab 8. Per the Municipal Code, Section 1805.055, which is Tab 14, if the cumulative area of the accessory buildings on a site is less than 50% of the size of a primary building, it's allowed. You can go get a building permit. If the cumulative area of the accessory structures is more than 50%, but not greater than 75%, an administrative permit is required prior to obtaining a building permit. And that means you go to an administrative hearing, and it's a public meeting. And if the cumulative area of the accessory structures is 75% or greater, a special use permit is required, which means the applicant would come before the Planning Commission, obtain a special use permit, and then could pursue a building permit. Carson City Municipal Code, Section 15.05.020, Section 105, and just like Title 8, we don't work with Title 8, we don't work with Title 15 either. So it's rare that we look at Title 15, but that's been included in your late material. And that explains that building permits are required for structures greater than 120 square feet. So should these structures that have been built around these storage containers exceed 120 square feet, a building permit is required. I have requested that at the time of building permit application, that the application include the cumulative square footage of the accessory buildings, so I can determine how to apply Section 18.05.055, which we just reviewed about the cumulative square footage of the accessory buildings, vis a vis the primary structure. So I'm going to keep it, I'm going to leave it there, and those are the code provisions I found to be applicable. And that's how I address this case, and I'm happy to answer questions.
So Lee Plamell, Community Development Director, I just wanted to note, that's once, the reason that this got to hope for these interpretations is that there was a complaint submitted against the property owner to our code enforcement department. Our code enforcement department went out and investigated, and came back with this information and pictures, and so that enforcement, that through code enforcement is in abeyance now, in pending the determination of the planning department's interpretation of the codes.
So this original code enforcement was back, what, in 2016? It was brought forward?
Correct. I believe it was the complaint, the code enforcement case was opened on March 7, 2016.
And in both these cases, this could be remedied with a special use permit?
Based on my interpretation of the code and my understanding of the facts, yes.
Other questions for staff?
I'm sorry, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager, I just want to state for the record, some materials were distributed at the beginning of this meeting, and I have not had a chance to review those. So nothing that I've said today incorporates any of that information that's been submitted.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kevin Benson. I'm an attorney, I'm here representing Mr. Gibbons tonight, and he is also here as well, and I believe that he may also be available to answer some questions and so forth for the commission. So first, I'd like to begin by giving a little bit of background about this, a little bit more than what you've already heard. And as you've heard, it's a one-acre, single-family residential parcel. In July of 2015 is when Mr. Gibbons began building this fence. And it took a little over a year to build the fence, it wasn't, it was finally fully completed in about September or so of 2016. It was in the summer of 2016 that Mr. Gibbons first heard anything from the city regarding any kind of complaints or anything about the fence. And as you noted earlier, staff became aware of this in about, on March 7, 2016. So he was contacted, we believe, in August of 2016, and he expressed his disagreement at that time that there was anything amiss. He never received any written notice of any kind of violation, or anything saying he had to reduce the height of his fence, or get a special use permit, or anything of that nature. And so the fence was completed, and it was in late 2016 that Mr. Gibbons and his neighbors started to, entered into a dispute regarding their rights to an easement that the city reserved to itself after it abandoned Hickory Drive, which was a road that was, that abutted the eastern side of his property, and the neighbors as well. And so that dispute became a lawsuit that Mr. Gibbons initiated in early 2017, and the party to that lawsuit were the immediate neighbors that were adjacent to this road that was abandoned, as well as Carson City was also a defendant in that case. And it was, so that, that occurred, just to give you the timeline, that occurred in early 2017. And about June 2017, in early summer, was when Mr. Gibbons placed the storage that is there now. There had previously been, in May of 2011, there was placed a rented cargo container for storage on the property, and that was, you know, there plainly visible from the street, from May of 2011 till about March of 2017, when it was removed. There was never any complaints, or any issues, or any notices of violation, or anything with regard to the previous storage container. In about mid-May of 2017, Mr. Gibbons received a red tag on the gate. The red tag referred to concrete pads that were being poured, that the city said, "Hey, it looks like you're building something here. We don't have a building permit on file for it, would you please file for a building permit?" There was, again, no mention of any violation of the fence, or no mention of any violation, I'm sorry, with regard to the fence. He explained that they are not building something there, that they are going to be placing new containers to replace the one that had been previously moved off. It was not then until late December, December 29, that a letter was sent noticing him of violations regarding the fence and the storage. And he received that in, only in January of 2018. Mr. Gibbons replied to those letters, which I believe are part of your packet that you received prior to the meeting, stating his objections and so forth. And he received a final notice of violation from the city on February 5. That notice states that Mr. Gibbons must reduce the height of the fence, or apply for a special use permit, and also that he must apply for a building permit for the storage. It also, of course, noted his right to appeal that decision, which he did timely file an appeal, which is why we're here today. So that is, that is the timeline, and that, I will mention that throughout, that'll hopefully become more apparent why that's important a little bit later on. So with regard to the two violations, I'll take them in order. First, with respect to the fence, as you note, the picture here that's still up, staff is measuring the fence from the adjacent grade of the fence, and as they noticed, noted, it should be measured from the street grade. And we believe that when it is measured from the street grade, it is at most five and a half feet from that. We believe it probably still is over four feet, but it's at most five and a half feet from there. So we're talking, you know, something about a foot or so of distance, foot to six inches or so. At this point, because it hasn't been measured by staff from that fence grade, we don't believe that staff has in fact established that it is over the height limitation, based on where, according to the code, it's, it should be measured from the street grade. That's, with regard to the height of the fence, going back to when Mr. Gibbons initially constructed this fence, he looked at the Development Code, which is the appendix to Title 18, and the very first section says in there, "These design standards are intended to promote the quality of the design for," I'm paraphrasing, I'm not quoting directly, "commercial, industrial, multifamily, downtown, building in the city." It does not mention single-family residential at all, anywhere in that section. And so Mr. Gibbons, reading that, reasonably understood that to mean that these design standards, meaning the appendix eight, two, chapter 18, Title 18, does not apply to single-family residents, because it specifically listed every other type of use except for that. And so he believed in good faith that this, that those requirements did not apply to single-family residents, one-acre lots, and built his fence accordingly. Again, these, and, these standards, it also states in there, again, that these are to promote the quality and the aesthetics of these commercial, retail, industrial zones, so forth, in order to promote the economic well-being and so forth of the city. Again, no mention that they are intended to restrict the use of a single-family, you know, one-acre parcel. It does mention, when we get to Section 1.13, it does mention residential parcels in there. However, the first subsection that mentions it states that electric fences and barbed-wire fences are permitted in single-family one-acre, two-acre, and five-acre parcels, but they are not permitted anywhere else. And that makes sense, we probably don't want a lot of electric fences and barbed-wire fences in commercial retail districts. It's not a restriction on those uses in any way in single-family one-acre, two-acre, five-acre. And when we get to subsection five, is a part that references a maximum, it says you can have a maximum of five-foot hall, tall, split rail fence in a single-family one-acre, five-acre, two-acre. This is the only part that I think anybody reading this could even arguably perceive that this is intended to apply to a residential parcel like this. And, but to, in order to even get there in the first place, you have to completely ignore what is in the very first section of the entire appendix, which says, "These design standards," that is, this appendix, "are for the purpose of promoting the quality of design in all these other districts." So you can't get there without completely ignoring that language and reading into it something that doesn't exist there. And it's ordinary rules of statutory construction that to list specific things means that you are intentionally excluding all other things. It would, it would certainly be very different if it simply said that this is to establish design standards for all districts in the city. If they had meant that, presumably, they would have simply said so. Instead, they went through pains to pick out every single different type of district except single-family residential. And so that, that section there, like I said, you have to completely ignore that to even assume that this applies in this case. And in this case, I think that if it was intended to apply to these residential areas, they would have, for one, simply said so. And if that was a mistake in the drafting, the proper thing to do is what you just did with the marijuana sign regulations, which is to correct the code, amend it so that it says what it's supposed to do, rather than simply to enforce it, even though it doesn't really say that in the code. And in this case, the error, we believe, is properly corrected, if, that's a drafting error, which... if that's a drafting error, which I'm not sure that it is. I think maybe it really was intended not to apply to single-family residential, is to simply amend it, go through that process again, which you are certainly free to do if that is the intent of the city. If we get to, you know, even really if you assume that these do apply to single-family residential parcels, these restrictions really only demonstrate how arbitrary these requirements are. And for example, to allow a five-foot split-rail fence, which it states in there is not restricted in these areas, and you can build them essentially anywhere, even right up on the property line, within the setbacks from the roads and so forth, there's no rational reason why that should be permitted, but not any other type of non-site obstructing fence, which is what we have in this case. And so why five feet there, but three feet or four feet? There's simply no rational basis whatsoever for making those distinctions in the code. And for that reason, we believe that it would be invalid in any case. Now, another reason why we asked the commission to overturn staff's decision is, as I stated, Mr. Gibbons began this construction in 2015. Staff became aware of it in early 2016. It was not until the end of 2016, excuse me, the end of 2017, nearly two years later, that there was any kind of enforcement action taken. He reasonably believed that, you know, after, he spoke with staff, and he disagreed, and he stated why, that that was the end of it, that there was nothing more to be done. There was no violation until after this dispute happened with the easement. He filed this lawsuit. The timing is, it looks retaliatory. It looks like this is being made simply because he exercised his rights to go to court to determine the rights to this easement. It looks like that's what precipitated this. And so obviously, if it's retaliatory, which it certainly appears to be, for exercising his First Amendment right, then that would be an arbitrary and capricious enforcement action, which could not be held up in any event. The other, the third reason why we believe that the staff's decision should be reversed in this case is because retaliatory or not, this is a, I think, a quite clear case of selective enforcement. And in your packet that was passed out earlier today, we have, if you take the cover letter off of that and look at the second part of there, we have a few photos. And these are all photographs of property that are just within that immediate neighborhood. It's not all over the city. It's just right there in Mr. Gibbons' immediate neighborhood. And if you look at that, you will see several examples of fences. The first one is a masonry and wrought iron fence, which is quite similar to the one that Mr. Gibbons constructed. It is at least six feet tall, and it is as close or closer to the road than the one that he constructed. On Northview at 4129, we have a masonry and wood solid fence, again, that is at least six feet tall, well within the setbacks as well. At 4280 Bigelow, we have another masonry and wood fence, which, again, is solid, and also within, at least, again, at least six feet tall, within the setbacks. On Valley View, we have a solid rock wall. This is probably approximately five feet tall. It's not as tall as the others. At 4051 Muldoon, we have a chain-link fence, which is approximately, it looks like it's six feet tall, again, right on the road. There's another photo. It's a little further out, but I'm afraid it's a little smaller, so it might be, but that's of the same fence. At 4949 Ponderosa, we have horse crel fencing, at least five feet tall, probably closer to six. And at 4139 Hillview, we have a, you know, solid wood fence, at least six feet tall. 4779 California, we have a chain-link fence, six-foot-tall chain-link fence with, I don't know what kind of plants those are, but some kind of ivy or vines growing within it. And so, again, because we've just shown you a handful of examples of things that were pretty easy to find within that immediate neighborhood. And so the Nevada Supreme Court has recognized that when you enforce provisions of a municipal code against one person, but not against other similarly situated landowners, that that is arbitrary and capricious, and that it can also be a violation of equal protection. And based on just this handful of examples that were pretty easy to find right within that very same neighborhood, I believe that that is what would occur here if this commission, if staff were to enforce these violations against Mr. Gibbons. So if, well, I guess we'll take questions at the end. I'll move on to the container issue, on to the second issue. And this is where the staff has stated that he's required to apply for a building permit, because he's constructed a building around the container. And with regard to that, I think the, it's, the letter of February 5 states that he has to apply for a building permit. It says right in there that it doesn't think that it would be approved, but that you have to apply for one. In any event, the requirement for building a permit is not applicable here, because these are not buildings. There are no walls. There are no roof. If you look at the photos, thank you for pulling that up. What we have here is, we have a siding and trim facade that is attached directly to the container. They are not walls supporting a roof structure. There is no contact with the ground. These are simply a facade attached to the container to make it appear more like a traditional-type storage shed. So these are not buildings, as building is defined under the code, which requires a wall or columns to support a roof. That's not what we have here. And so simply for that reason alone, no building permit is required. And with respect to the issue of size, these are, you know, even assuming that applies because it's not a building, these are well below the size restrictions. Under the code, you can't have more than 50% of the primary structure, which in this case, and I believe this is in staff's report in your binder, is 2331 square feet. So 50% of that is 1,165 square feet. Nor can it be more than 5% of the total lot size, and this is approximately, it's one acre, not quite, it's 39,617 feet. So 5% of that is about 1,980 square feet. So these structures, both of them together, are 640 square feet. So whichever way you measure, it's well below the restrictions in either case. So with regard to staff's contention that these are not permitted because they are similar to tents, trains, boxcars, semi-truck trailers, passenger coaches, buses, sidecars, et cetera, we believe that that interpretation is incorrect, because these are clearly, they don't fall into any of those categories. As staff says, the only basis is that they are similar to. And respectfully, we submit that, you know, especially given the facade that has been attached to them, they are not similar to those structures in any event. There are no, they're clearly not semi-truck trailers. They're not rolling stock of any kind. And instead, if you look at your packet, I believe it's, it'll probably be like the fourth to the last page, is a picture of, you've all seen them, it's kind of your standard-issue metal building, which this, of course, is pretty similar to what your ordinary metal storage container looks like. There's not a lot of difference. This would be a permitted accessory use, under staff's interpretation, something that looks almost exactly like this, but is a pre-manufactured container, would not be. Again, it's, there's no rational distinction between those two things. And so, again, with regard to the containers, we have also the same issue that we have with respect to the fence, which is, there are numerous other locations within the same neighborhood where there are metal storage containers that are placed mostly within ClearView. And these are, again, in your packet. 1269 Valley View is one example. You'll see them throughout. This one is a little bit hard to see, because it is, there's a large motor home that it's behind that, but there's another metal storage container Here is a large truck body, which, you know, clearly falls within the definition here without interpretation. On this property, we have two blue metal storage containers. Another one at 871 ClearView. You can go through the packet and see these. And you can see on your first packet, on this one, here's an overland that also has two. It's a little bit difficult to tell from these what exactly these are. They look like metal storage containers. You can see in your packet, I believe it's the first page after the cover letter, a Google map that is a mapping of all of these addresses. And not all of these. I should note that these photos are not all the things that are out there. There are others that we did not include in the packet as well. But that Google map gives you a little bit of an idea of the relatively small area that we're talking about here, and the number of conditions that exist that are exactly the same as, or we believe quite a bit worse, than what is present on Mr. Gibbons' property. And so, again, to enforce something like this against him and not take any action against any of these other conditions, we believe is arbitrary and capricious, and also violates equal protection, in addition to the fence requirements clearly being without any rational basis in the first place. And so with respect to that, like I mentioned before, the timeline, Mr. Gibbons reviewed these regulations, looked at the plain language of the first section of those, excuse me, design standards, and concluded that these did not apply to his property. He's not trying to get away with anything. He constructed his fence. It took him over a year to do so, and there weren't any problems until this issue came up with the easement lawsuit. And so what we're asking for here is a little bit of reasonableness in how these things are applied and enforced. And in this case, having looked at the code, you built this fence, it's something that he's trying to improve the beauty of his property. He's got many, many compliments on this fence. You know, he's taken pains to improve the appearance of the storage containers, which is above and beyond, we believe, from what is normal in that neighborhood. And so for all of those reasons, and for the, you know, the reasons that we've put in our, in our letter to the commission, we would respectfully request that you reverse staff's decision in this particular case. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Stone?
Where, if fences are not regulated in the development standards in Division 1, where would they be regulated?
I believe that the commission would need to amend the code to make it clear that these do, in fact, apply to single-family residential. The way the code is written now, they would apply, this would apply to the commercial, to the retail, to the multifamily, et cetera. But I believe the correct course of action is to amend the code to make it clear that it does, in fact, apply to all districts.
This is the first time we've seen this. It's come to us, to the commission. And we just, I know we had a case not long ago on the west side of town with a similar fence. But it was same reasoning. Instead of wrought iron, he had put wire to keep the deer from eating the flowers in his yard. And that came before this and was approved. The commission is separate from staff. Staff can make a recommendation, but Basic Planning Commission 101, it comes to us, we can make a decision on our own. Or, and if someone doesn't like that decision, they still have the recourse to go to the Board of Supervisors. So nothing has been brought to us on this, is, from what I understand, if there was a special use permit application, and it was, it could be approved, and it would apply, then there's no difficulty, correct?
I understand where you're coming from. And in this case, as far as we know, none of these other uses have been approved by a special use permit. And so to force Mr. Gibbons to go through what is an expensive process, and a difficult process, and one that staff has indicated they would not support in any event, we believe is, again, arbitrary and selective enforcement, that he's being singled out where no other people have been forced to go through this process.
And I saw that in the application, where the person who had written the recommendation, in their opinion, they would not support it. But until it would be brought to staff and discussed whatever, I mean, that would still, that's just an opinion of a staff member. It's not an opinion of the commission, or of the Board of Supervisors, or anyone. And so there's basic, I mean, there's basic guidelines that have to be in, but they can all be adjusted. We do that all the time. We just approved a building 1,500 square feet, put some fencing up, everything's fine, that kind of thing. So, again, it's just a, I think a special use permit could solve that difficulty. But anyway, that's just my.
Any other questions for the appellate?
I don't have a question for the appellant. I have a personal observation from what I've seen here, in that, given the examples that have been provided on the existing fencing in all of the other locations, and the containers that are present on multiple locations, I don't believe that a special use permit should be required unless we contact all of those other entities and make them go through the same process. That's just my personal opinion of looking at the documents presented by the gentleman from Allison-McKinsey, that there are multiple examples of fences similar to the one that Mr. Gibbons has built. So...
I believe in this case, though, that code enforcement is separate from planning and, obviously, from us, correct? I mean, that's a different department.
Yeah. So he's, and actually, I haven't had, we only have one copy here. I haven't had time to go. But it's the first I've been made aware of these other ones. Let me say, generally, with code enforcement, we have, we've only recently had two staff. For years, we had one code enforcement officer. So we're not driving down every street in every neighborhood looking for, looking for violations. So they do happen, until they're brought to our attention. So that's one thing. As Mr. Benson mentioned, we don't know that some of these aren't permitted through special use permits. We had a special use permit for a fence tonight, had one, like you said, on prior agenda. So we would go, we could go check that and check those. And so that, so with code enforcement, I want to, I mean, I do want to note that, that it's not, they don't put blinders on when they go to somebody's house. It's typically if there's others across, if they need to know that, okay, this neighbor's doing it. If there's some, if the same thing's going wrong, going on on that same street in the same area, they have been very good in the past about identifying, dying those and taking care of those. But just don't have the time with the staff that we have to take on and go find more. They got plenty to do, just taking on complaints right now. So that's a little bit of background of how some of these things occur. Again, we don't know what's a violation, what has approval. We've consistently, perhaps, oh, the other thing I wanted to point out is some of these may, so some of those examples are certainly newer. You could tell by the photos. Some may have been, some may have been there for decades. Who knows? There's also grandfathering of uses. We know we have a new fence, new thing- We know we have a new fence, new things being placed here. We don't necessarily know that at this time. We would have to go back and investigate these other situations.
Well, three of our agenda items tonight were within a mile of each other out there. So I spent quite a bit of time driving around out there. And there's corrals, there's buildings, there's RV, you know, units, et cetera, et cetera. And I know part of the reason people go out there is they can get some acreage and kind of do that thing. And we're usually fairly supportive of that sort of thing. And, again, looking at the property and at this fence, et cetera, I mean, if he would have hired a contractor, I couldn't, you're talented to be able to build that fence. But, I mean, they probably would have said, hey, you may have to get a special use permit or something. And I just think some of it has been lost just through communication or whatever since 2016 to today that could be easily remedied if we go through, you could leave, this just thinking off the top of my head, you could leave the appeal in place because we don't want to take away anything, his ability to appeal this. If he would consider going through the special use process, if it's approved, then the appeal could be removed or else if it's still there, I don't know. I'm just kind of trying to juggle things and figure out a way to make this amenable without having to go through a lot of legal, whatever, legal status or whatever.
May I respond briefly to that, Mr. Chairman? I certainly appreciate that, and I understand that the commission is separate from staff. And, like I said, the issue here is, I think, one of fairness and of equitable enforcement. Because, as you know, it's $2,200 just to file the application for a special use permit. That doesn't include any of the fees that go to engineers or contractors or anybody else to put together an adequate application with the proper measurements and the research and so forth and so on. Furthermore, if, and I understand that you are separate from staff, but if staff opposes the special use permit and you have to make all of those findings, it makes the process just that much more difficult and more expensive. We don't believe that Mr. Gibbons should have to be the one to bear the expense of not having enough staff to go and make everybody else do a special use permit, for example. And in this case, as you just mentioned, was something I was going to point out, which is that three of those projects we just had tonight were in that neighborhood. And so, it's, you know, something that people are going out there. Previously, I think it was in 2017, Mr. Gibbons relocated his gas meter. They came out and they inspected that. The fence was there. There was nothing said, again, about the fence. So this idea that, you know, they are out there, they are looking, but yet there's nothing being said that, hey, you're in violation until, you know, very late in the game in this case. And so, we believe that it would be considerably different treatment from what other people have experienced, just having to go through the special use permit process, that he shouldn't have to bear that in this case when other people have not had to do that.
I believe if I remember right from reading the information, this was generated originally by a complaint. See, and that, unfortunately, that will generate someone going out or looking, you know, rather than just, I know where you're coming from, but that's how this got started and why they would complain about a nice-looking.
And I understand that that complaint, that's the other kind of issue we have here, is that that complaint was made in March of 2016. And it's not until nearly two years later that the homeowner is notified, hey, you're in violation. I mean, the average person is not, is going to figure it's a done deal. It's over at that point.
Art, would you like to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just didn't want to interrupt the sequence of the hearing. If we're at questions by the commission or clarification by staff, I mean, I would be happy to make some observations for the record at this point.
Mr. Gibbons, please.
And if Mr. Gibbons will be stepping up to the podium to present, then I'll hold my comments until after he's had an opportunity to do so.
I would like to make a couple of comments, but could you come up to the podium?
Please come up to the podium, so it'll be recorded. Yes, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Yes, thank you.
Peter Gibbons, I am the manager of Equity Management Services, which is the trustee for the Ponderosa EQ Land Trust who owns the property. And that was done for estate planning purposes. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. As Mr. Benson mentioned, you know, we did, you know, relocate a gas meter and, you know, brought the city out and so forth. A lot of people moved to Carson City because they've come from other places. They liked the freedom in Nevada. They like the fact that the legislature meets every other year, can only do half as much damage. As you've all noted in our neighborhood down there, it's single-family, one acre. For the most part, everybody keeps to themselves. The litigation that he mentioned regarding the easement was most unfortunate. I was very reluctant to bring it, but what had happened was the city had abandoned a portion of Hickory Drive and reserved an easement for all abutting property owners. But then what happened was a year later, the property on the east side, there's four parcels there now, they did a subdivision map. And in the subdivision map, they dedicated an easement for utility and access, but made no mention of the abandonment or the fact that that easement, it had already been reserved for all abutting property owners. And then, even to make matters worse, when they recorded the deeds for the two properties in that subdivision that abutted the easement, they made no mention whatsoever of the abandonment and the easement, whereas all of the properties along the west side, each had a separate clause in their parcel descriptions that said, "and a 15-foot easement." So these people were unaware that that was not really their property, that it had been reserved. And so, we tried to explain it as civilly as possible. Unfortunately, they hired an attorney who was extremely combative, which was unfortunate. And so, the only way to resolve it was to file a suit. All of the property owners, except for those two, including the city of Carson, stipulated to the outcome of litigation. And eventually, all the, we all stipulated to judgment, and that's been resolved. I do think, though, that either that or perhaps during the course of building the wall, our neighbor to the south took umbrage. They've been kind of difficult since we moved in. We've done everything we can to get along with them, but I suspect that that might be what caused the complaint. But I'm 60 years old now. I've been involved in engineering, construction, and other things as well. I've been practicing law for 20 years. And in all of the things that I've done, I have never received so many compliments as we received on this wall. As people drive by, they stop and they say, "That's awesome. We love it." And the truth of the matter is, we wanted to build something beautiful. And when I did receive a call from Hope Sullivan in August, August 25th of 2016, I did express my disagreement with her. I went back, I checked the code, I saw that first section, and I'm like, "It says it doesn't apply." And so, but nevertheless, I did try to make sure that we complied with the spirit of the fencing code. The masonry portion is only three foot. The side obscuring portion is easily seen through. You can see the entire property from there. And actually, that picture right there, we had formerly had a container sitting right in the center of the lot for, you know, six years, no problems whatsoever. So we had no idea there was any issue with containers. And in fact, when we poured the slab, and I think it was probably the same neighbor that called and said, you know, they're pouring, you know, they're building a building back there or whatever, I called and I spoke to, I believe it was Kathy Green. And I said, "No, we're not putting up a building. We're simply relocating a container and adding a new one." And I didn't get any, I didn't get any comment one way or the other about containers. So we had no reason to expect that that would be a problem, especially since they're all over the neighborhood. Then come to find, become aware of the code regarding containers. And I would bring your attention again to this photograph that Mr. Benson provided. Just an observation and a respectful suggestion is, storage containers are probably the most efficient and cost-efficient storage available on the planet. They're super strong, they're almost airtight, they can stand ocean-going. I think the real problem that people have with them is their appearance. Oftentimes, they come in rusty and they look like hell. So I understand those concerns, but we've taken steps to make ours look like a building. And I would, I would just respectfully suggest that maybe the city might rethink their position on those and adopt something, instead of just outlawing the most efficient storage, you know, facility on the planet, make provisions that, hey, if neighbors complain or it's, you know, complain of as a nuisance, you have to make it, you know, match the trim and color of your building or something. I mean, I think there's less restrictive ways to address the issue and still allow people the freedom to use something that is so cost-effective. And also, the nice thing about it is, can be removed. In our case, those aren't, well, hopefully, they're not going to stay there forever. We happen to have a barn on that property that's been there forever, and it has, it had a terrible roof, and we determined that it wasn't worth repairing the barn. And so, we also need to do remodels on the house, hence the relocation of the gas meter. Eventually, we'll be relocating the electric meter. Then we want to do some major improvements on the house, but we needed a place to store tools and materials and so forth in the interim, and this seemed to make sense. And we didn't have any idea that there was a problem with it. So my point in my comments is to say, we totally get the fact that everybody wants Carson City to be beautiful. We do too. We want our property to be beautiful. And how this happened is just, when I look at this fence, if we were to cut that down to four feet, it would not serve the purpose. As I mentioned in my response to the, to, I believe it was to Kathy Green, you know, the reason that we did this was prior, there was chain link and wire and so forth, and we had, our neighbors on Bigelow had mountain lion tracks taking their chickens. We've had bear tracks, coyotes. But mostly, we've had dogs come in and kill our chickens. And chickens are wonderful. They, they, they're the most ecological pest control we've ever found. They give us eggs. And the neighbors that were letting their dogs at large were not very cooperative, as is sometimes happens with people who are a little responsible, they, you know, carries over into their relations. We called the pound, we'd had the sheriff out, well, actually, they called the sheriff out because we were holding their dog. And so, when we went to build this, we wanted something that Nevada severe weather wouldn't destroy, wood fencing doesn't last long. We didn't like chain link, it looks just too industrial. So we were trying to think of something, what would be beautiful, really sturdy and hardy, and get the job done and keep, you know, predators from just sailing over the fence. If we go 30 foot back, the fence would be like right in our front door. And also, it would completely break up the use of the front area of the property. When I saw the fence code that had been brought up in our conversation was completely inapplicable to residential properties, I thought, well, it really shouldn't be a problem here. We're complying in spirit. We've got an attractive thing. It, you know, it meets the criteria of health, safety morals, and even the criteria of the appendix, which says, you know, quality design. So we thought we were in good shape. And if we've made a mistake, I apologize, but bottom line is, it seems patently unfair to carry this thing, you know, on and on. I think we've paid the price. Obviously, Mr. Benson isn't here for free. It's not really about the money. I read the law, I thought I was complying, and the city disagrees. I understand that. That's why we're here. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, and I remember with the one on the west side that was similar with the gentleman that put the wire between, and the same thing. He said, "My fence is only three feet. The solid part, the rest is," they said, "Well, the posts are six feet." So I kind of looked at that and said, "Well, in that case, those posts are, you know." If you took the posts out and put solid fence, would it qualify? I don't know, but I'm just saying.
You can't build a fence without the post being taller than the fence. And there's actually no mention of posts in the code anywhere. So, anyway, but, you know, my point is, it seems like we're kind of splitting hairs, making much ado about nothing. You know, if we had a trash heap there and had put up, you know, and the thing is, I could take those wrought iron panels out and put in split rail, or I could put in electric wire. How would that improve things? The code says that I can do that, though. You know, if we interpreted the way the city wants us to interpret it, it applies to single-family residences. So I just feel like, why are we here? And I don't mean to be disrespectful, I'm simply saying, we tried to do a really nice job, we tried to improve our neighborhood, we've had lots of compliments, and here we are.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. And I'm not sure how to put this, but, you know, I agree with the staff's interpretation of the code. I have a former planner myself and have gone through this many, many times, but I agree with you. I think in fairness, for us to require you to do something other than what you've done with your fence, it would be totally unreasonable on our part. As far as the, you know, the code enforcement has always been an issue for me, that, and I, you know, selective enforcement has, is a problem for every community in this country. And I don't know how to get around that. And, you know, but I think that the one thing that we can do is to revise the code to make it clear that these standards apply to these situations. And I agree with your, you know, if I had looked at that and said, oh, these, I would have said, "They don't apply." So I, I'm going to have to, while I agree with the staff's interpretation, I'm going to have to vote against their recommended position on this.
I don't think we're at the point where the commission's having a discussion. I think the appellant is still presenting, and the staff would like the opportunity to provide clarification.
All right.
So let's staff apply clarification, and you'll have an opportunity after that as well.
So if both Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Benson are finished with their presentation, I would like to chime in at this point, Mr. Chairman, at your indulgence. I just wanted to make a few comments and observations. I also didn't have really ample opportunity to review and digest the late material that was submitted right before the start of tonight's meeting. During some of the other agenda items, I did manage to kind of skim through some of these items. And of course, as some of these things were alluded to during their presentations, I made some notes, and I want to address that. I don't want anybody to construe my comments and observations from a legal standpoint as me urging for you to take certain action. I don't personally have any skin in this game as a DDA from the district attorney's office. My role here is just to present objective, fair information. You can use that information at your discretion and rely on it to the extent that you want to in forming your vote. You know, the first thing that I want to say is, you know, I appreciate both the appellant's comments and Mr. Benson's comments. Mr. Benson and I have known each other for years. I've worked with him both on the same side of matters as well as in opposition on various matters. And I have a great deal of respect for him. The first thing that I do want to point out, which was a little bit bothersome to me, is, you know, all these references to this case, you know, that happened last year involving the Ponderosa Land Trust, I believe, as the plaintiff. It's bothersome to me because I don't know, and so pardon me if I'm misconstruing some of these statements, but I think there were some references to this case because there were some sort of an inference attempted to be drawn that, hey, there was some sort of animosity on the part of the city or something that was done on the part of the city in retaliation to, you know, Mr. Gibbons as the plaintiff. I can tell you that from specific personal experience, because I happen to be the DDA who was on that case, and I worked with Mr. Benson's former associate at the Allison McKenzie Law Firm. The city was only named as a party defendant to that lawsuit after the complaint was amended because one of the types of relief that was requested in that lawsuit pertained to a request for declaratory relief. Under NRS provisions, Carson City as a quote-unquote "interested" party in that matter, having been the party who had abandoned that easement, all right, to the parties who were the actual real parties in interest in that lawsuit, right, that's the only reason we were drawn in. It was an easy stipulation, the parties all agreed that so long as Carson City could reserve any potential existing rights that it already had. And that was more specifically with regards to if we had any existing underground utilities, for example, we still expressly reserved those rights. But the city really wasn't a party in interest. We stipulated to a dismissal, the city. I don't see how any inference can be drawn for... I don't see how any inference can be drawn for, you know, the fact that, hey, just because we happen to be named in that lawsuit, we have some sort of animosity as it relates to the particular matter before the commission tonight. So, that's something that I wanted to establish for the record, all right? The other thing that I had heard multiple times tonight, over and over again, is equal protection. I mean, that's a legal standard, all right? We all know that. And we've also heard the term selective enforcement. I don't disagree with the assertion that when there is selective enforcement of certain municipal ordinances, at times, there could be a valid claim for an equal protection violation. I can also tell you, however, that based on some preliminary legal research I've conducted, and I don't know if it's binding on the state of Nevada, because my research, as I said, is preliminary, I just haven't had a lot of time to, to fully digest all the material, especially the late material that was just presented. I can tell you, however, that I am aware of other case law that specifically says that when it comes to selective enforcement as grounds for alleging an equal protection violation, that's not always sustained in the absence of a personal animosity that's founded, all right? So, in other words, a court will say, unless you can prove with evidence that the code enforcement officers had some sort of a personal beef, you know, with this homeowner, and therefore, I'm going to selectively enforce this code against you, whereas I'm not going to be enforcing it against your other neighbors in the area, there still will not be a finding of equal protection violations. And again, with the caveat that I'm not sure what the Nevada Supreme Court has said on that matter, if any at all, that's some, you know, some additional information that I'll dig into. With respect to their application of rules of statutory construction as it applies to ordinance interpretation, again, I don't disagree that Nevada's rules of statutory construction do apply in general to how you properly interpret ordinances, all right? And that's what our Nevada Supreme Court would employ as well in interpreting code. However, I do disagree with their position that by reading the prefatory provision in the appendix of Division 1 to Title 18, that a person of reasonable or ordinary intelligence would not be able to decipher that the rest of the contextual provisions do apply to residential use districts. The reason I say that is because there's also what's known as the Scrivener's Error Doctrine, all right, which I'm sure that Mr. Benson is aware of. That's a doctrine, a legal doctrine, that was an offshoot of interpreting contracts, but has also been applied by courts over and over again to the proper interpretation of statutes and ordinances. So, therefore, when you combine that with the fact that there's another doctrine called absurd results, and we have to avoid that, you look at the rest of the contents of the appendix of Division 1, you cannot say that, hey, a person, a person of ordinary intelligence can allege that by the mere absence or omission in that prefatory preface when it comes to, provision when it comes to application, by taking out residential use districts, the rest of that division no longer applies. If that were the case, which, again, I believe it was probably a Scrivener's Error, I wasn't around when that ordinance was enacted back in 2001, I'm pretty confident that that was not an intentional omission, because if it were, every other division standard as it relates to, for example, whether or not you can have a guest cottage as an accessory dwelling unit, would not be applicable. Clearly, that's applicable to residential lots and not to commercial lots. Another example I can give you off the top of my head, Nevada law requires municipalities to adopt ordinances, if they wish to do so, to regulate on a local level, the licensure and regulation and conduct of childcare facilities, all right? So, there are certain provisions that may or may not be in there, but if it does not apply to residential units or residential parcels, then local municipalities like Carson City would not be able to govern childcare facilities in the city. So, I disagree, I agree with their use of the rule of statutory interpretation, I disagree with their result that they're coming at. But that's my comment on Scrivener's Error Doctrine, absurd result. The last thing that I, I want to point out to everyone here is that the Nevada Supreme Court has also held in the past that when it comes to interpreting ordinances, how to properly apply them to circumstances, they will provide or give quite a bit of deference to how the District Attorney's Office will be interpreting those ordinances for application purposes. I'm your general counsel, essentially, for the planning commission. I'm also a DDA for the DA's office, and I can tell you that my interpretation is that I agree with staff's findings. Again, don't construe that as me advocating for the result of your vote. Again, I don't have any skin, skin in this game, but I believe that staff's recommendation, staff's findings and their interpretation is not arbitrary, it's not capricious, and it's not unreasonable. The very last thing that I want to comment on, and then I'll stop, is, you know, this whole issue of lapse of time, you know? The violation first occurred back in 2016, there was no official notice, that went out until later. My understanding is, though, that there was at least communication that was transpiring during that time. And for me, instead of inferring from that lapse of time, staff's unwillingness to really zero in on this for resolution purposes, I would say that's really a testament to staff's willingness to work with the homeowner and trying to get this thing figured out, rather than going out and issuing a red tag or a notice of violation document and taking it to a very formal route and a procedure like we have here tonight. But that's just a personal observation of mine, that's not a legal observation, so you can disregard that if you like. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have with regard to my legal observations. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I may just make some clarifying comments. Mr. Benson and Mr. Gibbons both discussed the fact there's been a lot of compliments on this fence. One of those compliments came from me in August 2016, when I had a conversation with Mr. Gibbons. And I remember being really disappointed, because I asked him who his fence contractor was, because I thought the fence looked so nice. And he said he built it himself, which meant there wasn't a contractor out there who was, who was doing this. In my email that I sent to code enforcement following that August 16 phone call, which I thought was a pleasant phone call, is my recollection, I had, I had written down that Mr. Gibbons would be applying for a special use permit. The, that, that was my takeaway, he may have had a different takeaway, that's fair, but that was my takeaway that I documented to the code enforcement officer. And looking through the code enforcement file and preparing for tonight's meeting, I did see that it did sit for, I'm going to say a few months, to give Mr. Gibbons a chance to apply for the special use permit, and then the code enforcement officer sent a letter to Mr. Gibbons when the, when the special use permit had not come in. So, I just wanted to add that information and that I know for a fact, I complimented him on this fence. I thought it was a very nice fence, and we talked about the special use permit. Secondly, I was surprised to hear Mr. Benson refer to the February 2018 letter as a final notice of code violation. If you had a chance to read that letter, which is in tab three, that is by no means the intent of that letter. The letters that Kathy Green had written, I think, have the title Notice of Code Violation, they're, they're in the packet. Mr. Gibbons responded to those letters. In reading his response, it was clear to me that there was a disagreement on how the code was being applied. I wrote my letter in February 2018 to give Mr. Gibbons the opportunity of appeal. It was my attempt to provide him with due process, because it was clear to me there was a disagreement in the interpretation. So, that was actually an attempt to be helpful. By no means did I, I didn't title it a final notice of code violation, I outlined the code as I saw it and how I felt it needed to be applied in this circumstance. And my last comment is for the record, until this evening, I had no knowledge of an easement lawsuit.
Okay. Formally, I'm asking for public testimony?
Could I respond quickly to the, if I could, really quickly? I wanted to respond to, to some of the issues that were raised and with, and probably going backwards order, maybe that'll be easier if it's fresh in everybody's mind. I might go in backwards order with you. Your comment about it being called a final notice of violation, if that's not the correct technical term, I apologize, I didn't mean to use it as a term of art. The way the letter was written, Mr. Gibbons understood it to be an or-else letter. If you don't do something, we're, we're going to do something, you know, you must do this to comply. And so, we do appreciate that you've given us the chance here to appeal and to, to be heard. So, if that was the wrong terminology, I, I apologize for that. With regard to the conversation in August, there was that conversation. Staff found out about it in March, there was a conversation in August, Mr. Gibbons has a different takeaway from that conversation. And after that, there were at least two other visits to the property by the city. One to inspect the meter, and the other one was with respect to the pads being poured. So, there were at least two other times that there was direct interaction, and there was no indication that there was a violation with the fence. And so, we have from August to December of 2000, from August 2016 through December of 2017, that's almost a year and a half, that elapsed between the last conversation about the fence and the notice that he was in violation. And so, again, a reasonable person would, you know, especially, you know, like I said, he has a different takeaway, that he was not required to get a special use permit, would consider the matter over by then. With regard to Dan Freeman Marx, as he said, we've worked together before, and I also have very much respect for Dan, and, you know, we'll spar about some legal issues now and then, and, of course, we take, we take a different legal position on many of these things, and, you know, the lapse of time being one of them, which is that when you, nobody likes to get a red tag, obviously, but it puts everybody on notice that this is where we at, we are at, this is what you need to do. You do have a violation, it needs to be corrected. If that had happened in this case, then we wouldn't have had this long lapse of time that passes and, you know, the fence gets built, everything gets done, and it's been there for quite some time, and then all of a sudden, we have a, a violation. With regard to the lawsuit, we believe that, you know, that, as Mr. Gibbons alluded to, may have precipitated one of the neighbors to be filing a complaint with regard to that. That was unfortunate and putting, you know, perhaps, you know, I, I don't know if staff gets these, code enforcement gets these calls, you know, what's going on, why haven't you done anything, you know, et cetera, et cetera, those sorts of things. And so, that's, you know, with reference to this, this lawsuit, even if nobody at the city is concerned about this, we think that there may definitely be some animosity that was unfortunately created as a result of that. And with regard, again, to the legal issues and the interpretation of the code, the Title, Title 18 itself, the ordinance Title 18, is very clear that it applies to all use districts. That part is crystal clear. So, it's especially odd that the appendix specifically says certain use districts that it applies to, and it does not mention single-family at all in there. And so, that is, again, what appears to be an intentional drafting choice as opposed to an error. And as I alluded to before, even if it is an error, generally, when we look at, you know, drafting contracts and so forth, ambiguities and errors in drafting are construed against the drafter. They are not construed against an innocent party who becomes the target of enforcement as in this case. And so, again, what it, what it really boils down to is what we said in the beginning, is that we feel that there are, you know, even if you agree with staff's interpretation of the code, we believe that in this particular case, there are specific reasons why this commission should not follow that recommendation, those being that it was, there is ambiguity in the code, that Mr. Gibbons, you know, in good faith built this fence believing he was in compliance based on the ambiguity of the code, the significant lapse of time between getting any kind of notification that there was a problem and actually getting a written notice that he needs to apply for a special use permit or do something or reduce the fence. And again, of course, the multiple instances that in this very same neighborhood, this is a common occurrence, the, both the containers and the fences being well over five or four feet, you know, there are six, maybe more in a lot of cases. And so, we feel that for him to be singled out is simply fundamentally unfair. And, you know, as Dan mentioned in his comments initially, whether you agree with us legally or not on the interpretation of the code, what we're asking you to do here is exercise your discretion in this particular case, based on the facts of this particular case, that it's not, it doesn't serve the purposes of the code, it doesn't serve the purposes of equal protection of laws to single out Mr. Gibbons and make him go through a process that no one else in the neighborhood has, as far as we know, been required to go through. And so, that's what we're asking the commission to do, is to exercise some reasonable judgment in this case and reverse the staff's decision. And again, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to, to respond.
No question. Is the, on the storage containers, are they shingled? Shingled? Is there shingles on the top?
Uh, no, not, just a, just a, I'm sorry.
No, there's a, simply an elastomeric roof coating on it.
It sure looks like shingles.
Well, we, we put a-
There's a pitch on it.
Yeah, we put a-
So, it has a roof over it.
Yeah, and we could put shingles on there, but right now, it's just an elastomeric coating. It does have a roof, but it's supported by the container, not by the facade.
But if you do a repair on a roof over 100 square feet, you need a permit, right?
Well, we didn't repair, uh, we didn't, uh-
Okay, you answered the question.
Thank you.
Bring it back for commission discussion and decision. Myself, we have Commissioner Eswein and Commissioner Stowell, who are both planning backgrounds. We have Commissioner Solano with an engineering background, I'm just kind of a layperson, but I'm just trying to find a way that we could resolve this the simplest. I have difficulty with penalizing one of the better-looking properties in, in the area, but, but again, that's just my own personal opinion. Commissioner Stowell?
I think the, first of all, I totally support staff's interpretation, and I will be supporting a motion to affirm interpretation, both on 1.13 as well as 18.05055. There's a process here, and everybody has to go through that process. And so, the special use permit is a process that everybody has to go through, whether they do it upfront, before they construct anything, or after the fact. And you keep referring to the one we talked about on the west side, that was after the fact, they came through the special use permit process. The fencing regulations do apply to residential structures, it says that very clearly at the beginning of 1.13, fences, walls, and hedges are permitted use in all districts so long as. Typically, in a zoning code, if there's a qualification, it might say commercial districts, it might say industrial districts, it says all districts of 1.13. Obviously, this section of the code has always been used since it was adopted as development standards for residential structures. It's absurd to, to expect that this is, does not apply to residential structure, that is totally absurd. Processes to go through the special use permit, anything that's more than 120 square feet has to get a building permit, these are things that are part in the code. If you don't like what's in the code, then submit an amendment to the code and, and get it changed and go through the process. But that's a process that's used for fences in the city, and it's irrelevant whether it's beautiful, ugly, the best-looking fence in all of North America, that is totally irrelevant to the process that has to be gone through. Staff's done their homework, and frankly, they're giving you a lot more leeway to even bring this appeal, because frankly, they could have just said enough, and end of story, that's the code, you're in violation, period. So, you know, we spent a lot of time here tonight, giving you the opportunity to present your case, but that is the process, that's the code, and I don't see that there's any debate here, frankly.
Commissioner Solano?
I agree with the previous commissioners, what they have stated. It seems to me, instead of trying for, for us as laypersons to rewrite the code in accordance with something that has been submitted to us, is ridiculous. That's not for us to do. It seems to me that, I, I would feel more comfortable with affirming what, what staff is requesting and pursuing, you know, that way, rather than trying to, to revise everything. The special use permit- Commissioners, what they have stated, it seems to me, instead of trying for us as laypersons to rewrite the code in accordance with something that has been submitted to us, is ridiculous. That's not for us to do. It seems to me that, I would feel more comfortable with affirming what staff is requesting and pursuing, you know, that way, rather than trying to revise everything, the special use permit process is, it would seem to me, would solve this problem very easily without the thousands of dollars spent on lawyers.
Any other comments? Mr. Boarder.
Yeah, I just, when I first went through this, I tried to fix in my mind why a special use permit was so abhorrent. You know, we look at them all the time, and there's no way that I could say right now of all these dots in this map that we have, that there aren't some special use permits in there. And I can also see why a building inspector that's coming out to look at a gas meter installation would, was not going to question a wall, and there's nothing in his folder that says, oh, all these things are going on. He's going out there to inspect a gas meter, and he sees a wall like that, and he sees a fence like that, and he has the same opinion and hope, gee, that's a nice-looking wall. He's not going to question, while he's doing something else, whether or not everything he sees in the community of Carson City meets code or not. It would drive him absolutely crazy. And, you know, maybe the same thing happens to all those people out there, maybe somebody ought to go complain about everybody's storage container and fence, if that's the method that people wanted to do, and that sounds more retaliatory than what we're talking about. But to me, it sure seems like a special use permit solves all these problems. Sorry, guys.
Dan? We'll accept the motion.
I'll make the two motions, if that's all right. I move to affirm the staff's interpretation and application of Section 1.13 of the Development Standards Concerning Fencing. Motion number two, I move to affirm the staff's interpretation and application of Carson City Municipal Code 18.05.055 regarding accessory structures.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner Solano, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Commissioner Eswein and Commissioner Tingle remain.
Mr. Chair, actually, if we can have a minute, I'm wondering if there's a benefit to Commissioner Eswein and Commissioner Tingle, if they're comfortable stating their reasons for opposing the motion, should this be appealed to the board?
I already did. I already did.
And my reasons are related to the evidence supplied by the gentleman from Allison Mackenzie with all of the pictures and of the fences and the storage containers, and I would hazard a guess, and this is just a guess, that not every one of those owners of those fences got special use permits for those fences. And I understand code enforcement is challenged in staffing, I've encountered that on a number of occasions, but the length of time that it took for the whole process to unfold to the point where Mr. Gibbons filed his appeal, I believe that is a little bit unreasonable for Mr. Gibbons to have thought that there's still a problem here. He wasn't informed, there was a period of time that lapsed, he assumed everything was okay, because he did not hear otherwise, and so he moved forward in good faith. And I just feel that we are not giving him the benefit of the doubt here, and that I would certainly hate to see him have to pull that fence down or change that fence in any way, shape, or form, especially seeing some of the examples of the other fences that were brought forward. I mean, it's a night and day difference between the fence that this gentleman has put up and some of the other fencing, and I, you know, that's my thought, is code enforcement, if they need to go out and around, then they need to go out and around. That's my thoughts.
Staff reports.
Just real quickly, for next month, it'll be a shorter agenda, we have a special use permit for multifamily apartments in commercial zoning, it's actually an expansion of the Carson Hills Apartments up above the Galaxy Theater, and we'll have the tentative subdivision map that you continue tonight on the agenda.
I noticed today, when I was driving, where was I driving? Oh, on Curry Street, South Curry Street, kind of kitty corner across from the Greenhouse Garden Center, they're clearing-
Is that where that red house was?
Is that still there? I think that house is still there, or did they pull it down? But they're clearing a whole big swath of land, and I don't recall seeing that we had anything going up there.
Fence, it went up the road, road street, across a 10-foot fence, and he was going to do some lot adjustments and remove a mobile home and put another-
It's right, it's next to the Railroad Museum, is where the lot is, so I don't recall-
This would be southwest of Greenhouse, that's where I was thinking.
No, so I just didn't know if there was something that-
I know it's commercial property, I don't think we've received a permit for new construction yet.
Okay, I just was kind of curious, it was like, I wonder what's going there.
You can check with us, you can check with me in the office next week, or check with-
Are they required to have a grading permit to grade?
Depends on what, not necessarily. So there's thresholds for grading permits of how much dirt you can move, so did it sound like they, yeah, we'll look into it, we'll check into it, let you know.
Any commissioners' reports or comments? I just have a question, they have the right to appeal to the supervisors on this as well? I didn't know if I needed to state that or not.
So there's a potential we could get a special use permit request?
Oh, sure, that would be the simplest- Yes, I will accept any public comment. If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
And second, adjourn.